I'd like to welcome everyone to the Town of Hennessy Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, Thursday, November thirteenth, Town Hall, Council Room, 6:00 PM. Call to order and roll call please.
Randy?
Here.
John? David?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Harold?
Here.
A report from the Town of Hennessy Ad Hoc Agencies.
It's me.
Yeah.
I don't have my paper because I was late, but we logged about thirty-five hours this month on Discover Hennessy, and we're getting set up for next year's Wine Festival, Car Show, and various other things.
Okay. Thank you. Also had a Hennessy United meeting, the big Monday, so they kind of just discussed wrapping up and some of the Christmas festivities that they're gonna do. So, nothing really to mention of. Consider approval of consent agenda. Approval of minutes from the previous month's meeting. Approval of claims as follows. General fund, twenty-two thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four dollars and eighty-six cents. RSTF, thirty-three thousand, sixteen dollars and seventy-nine cents. Previous month's claims, one thousand, six hundred and eighty dollars and twenty-nine cents. Town Treasurer's report. Okay.
Don't have one yet.
Okay. I make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Citizens' comments? Town Administrator's report?
This week, we've working on, tonight, we're working on leak number three for the week. They've all, first one was Monday night, turned the water off, and they worked for approximately five hours in the middle of the night getting the water, the line fixed at Fort and Oak. Tuesday, they found a leak over at Cimarron in Iowa, and finished, that's, we had to turn them, unfortunately, we had to turn the water off during the evening, but there was no way, they couldn't even find the line without turning the water off, they couldn't isolate it. They did get that fixed and water back on about nine-thirty that night. And then, this morning, found another leak over here at the Methodist Church, and they just located the line about four o'clock today, and so they're working on fixing it. It's a, we, we tried to isolate it, we cut it off and we plugged it because we didn't think it went anywhere, but it, the only line that that serviced is the parsonage for the Methodist Church. So, they're having to go in there and, and put that line back together and cut out the bad part. You would think, there's the main that goes right in front, you would think that it would be hooked to that main, but no, it's a, a one-inch line that comes off of Second Street. So, crazy, crazy deal.
Okay.
Then also, this morning, our guys had the, I mean, they went down to Dover and were pallbearers for Bobby Thomas's funeral, so I just, respects to Bobby Thomas's family, prayers. He was a really good town employee, so. Other than that, I attached the swim and pool report. It shows that we, we're in the red about seventeen hundred dollars. Without the concession, we would've lost, lost quite a bit, because we doubled our money in concession, so. Not only that, we're down a little bit this year by visits and stuff like that, but with, we opened because we had problems at the beginning, so we opened pretty much a week later, and then we closed about a week, two weeks earlier. So, but other than that, it did really well, once again, so. That's all I have at this point.
Thank you. And I want to say, I appreciate, appreciate all the guys working. I know they were working on their day off on Tuesday, and they worked pretty much all day on that leak, doing everything they could to keep from having to turn the water off, so I appreciate all their hard work and let them know. Okay. Other scheduled business, six point one, discussion with possible action concerning the use of street sweeper equipment to include procurement, rental, lease, and other contracting services for both short-term and long-term planning and execution. David, I believe this one's yours.
Yes, sir, I'll start on it, I think Bert may have some comments on it.
Okay.
Tiffany, I actually just kind of wanted to talk to you and the rest of the board here on, on, I've done a little bit of market research myself, I looked at some equipment, and last month, we were talking with Alyssa, and you guys had some fairly large numbers on a new, or new technology, or new equipment-type street sweeper for the town. And I, I, I looked at it from the cheap point of view. I looked at it, I, I focused on construction-type equipment, like when you're, when you're going through a construction zone on the highway, you'll see, a lot of times, you'll see, the company will have a farm tractor with a street sweeper behind it, and it just, it's a very, I want to say, I don't want to say inexpensive piece of equipment, but it's something that just rolls, it has a roller on it, and it kicks rocks and trash and dirt to one side to clear it for traffic. Now, what I'm, what I'm, what I'm suggesting you and Alyssa look at is, is something in that category realizing that we can't sweep all the streets in Hennessy with that kind of equipment. What I'm talking about is the curb streets, Main Street, Oklahoma, and, and over around the school, stuff like that. So, I'm hoping that you and Alyssa will take another look at that, and I would volunteer to come up here and sit down with you, and get on the big screen, and do some internet surfing together, and look at some of that stuff that, that I would like for you to see. And I realize that, that, that I didn't put anything in the budget on it and everything, and it may take a little while to try to come up with something, a long-term plan, and, but I will, I will volunteer to work that with you and Alyssa when she gets back if you want me to, love to do that. And, and that's actually where, Randy, I want to leave this, as far as my portion of what I wanted to address, so.
David, a question?
Yes, sir.
Does, that type sweeper, does, it just moves, though? It doesn't pick it up?
Right, yes. Our employees would have to pick it up, or we could do it with a front-end loader on one of our farm tractors.
Okay.
You know, could we do it non-stop, twenty-four, seven, seven days a week? No. But, you know, for the holidays, we could clean up, you know, for our, for our
Right.
Shows, we could clean up.
I don't know what kind of sweeper you're talking about, but I wasn't, I wasn't sure if we were on the same page, but, yeah, I understand.
That's what I was thinking about Tiffany and Alyssa, when they were talking about the dollar figures at our last meeting, and I know, I know we can't, I know we can't buy a piece of equipment that costs that kind of money.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? But, I'm, I'm looking for a possible workaround to where we can at least move dirt and sand and, and possibly pick it up with a front-end loader, and may have, may have to do a little bit of shoveling. We'd have to pick and choose which streets we worked and which streets we didn't.
Well, tagging on to David's agenda item, I came out of one of the restaurants the other day, and the curbs on Main Street is terrible, it's horrible. And Tiffany, I know you'd reported to us once, the expense of contracting somebody, I'm wondering if there's anybody out there that we could get to come in, especially before the holidays, and just, just do a one-time, a real good one-time sweep of Maine and probably Oklahoma, and that sort of thing.
Yes, there are people that you can get to come in, I know there, and, and we could do that at one time, you know, you know, pretty expensive, because Alyssa's been looking into that.
Right, I didn't remember the number she gave us last time.
And Alyssa has that, and we were gonna put this back on this month, but she's on her vacation.
Right.
And so, actually, we have somebody else coming with a smaller street sweeper next month for the board meeting, so that will be on next month, just to look at, but I'll also mention to Alyssa, with these companies, they should have that broom, that broom that we could get to put on to the, I know, I think the skid steer, I think you could put a broom on a skid steer.
Right, and I think you can also put it on a farm tractor, and maybe even a pickup truck, I'm not, you know, the, the highway folks, when they're doing roadwork, they pull them with pickup trucks, so, depends on what you get, as to what it will go on.
I do know that during the winters, when the state comes through down Main Street, they're laying all that sand, and so then it just gets pushed to the curbs, you know, with the wind and everything, so, but we can, I'll get with Alyssa next week, and we'll see what we can, what we can find out.
So, David, would you like to table this?
Right, sure, if you don't mind, we'll table this, and let Alyssa talk to us about it, and Tiffany again, next month, next month.
Okay. And then, so, six point two, discussion with possible action on approval of reimbursement on the OML Conference charges. So, I put this on the agenda, and, you know, our rules with the Open Meetings Act, we can't really talk about this, I wanted to make sure all the other board members were aware of the charges and the reimbursement that we, the, are being asked for, so, we have an OML Conference every September, town employees attend, we're all offered to attend, so.
Wait, wait a minute, why can't we discuss it?
We can.
Oh, okay, I thought you said we couldn't.
No, discussion with possible action.
Okay.
So.
So, we can't know what's on the sheet?
No, we can, yeah.
Oh, okay.
I believe, I think it's all public record.
So, it looks like we've got, I don't know, Randy, that's your agenda item, I'm not thinking.
Yeah, no, go ahead, that's what I was going to, I just didn't take it away from you.
Three hotel rooms on one, on one claim.
Three hotel rooms on one claim for two nights, for nine hundred and five dollars and seventy-four cents. And that was for the town employees. And so, the other one, just to be completely transparent, also had some charges to a coffee shop and some other things.
Ask a question?
Absolutely.
Why aren't the others here?
Why aren't the others where?
We're only looking at one person, they said, that went to their old line, whatever.
The other ones are right here, I have it right here.
Where?
Right here.
I'm sorry, it was laying here.
It was laying here, Bert, Bert took it.
So, that's for the other five of people?
Yes. So, the other, the other charge is for one thousand, forty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents, and that was for two nights for one hotel room.
For a thousand dollars?
For a thousand dollars, forty-eight, a thousand, forty-eight dollars and forty-eight cents. So, I, I wanted to bring it to everyone's attention, I feel like for two-night stay, that's, that's pretty, pretty high, and I think going forward, we should definitely put a limit on that, because I feel like that's a waste when we've housed six other people for less money than that.
Okay, well, I'm gonna say something here, because for one, yes, I stayed at the Omni. Two years ago, when we went down there, they all stayed at the Omni, and I stayed down at the Holiday Inn. I did not know that they weren't staying, whenever they booked their rooms, they didn't ask me if, you know, to get me a room with them, I assumed everybody was gonna be staying at the Omni, so yes, I booked my room at, at the Omni, because that's where the conference was taking place. As for the coffee shop charges, I told, if anybody would've come to me before last month, I would've said, those weren't supposed to be on there. The gentleman at the front desk told me he was gonna take those off, and I guess that didn't happen, so when I filled out my claim, I just added my stuff together, I was getting ready to leave on vacation, I didn't even pay attention to what was on there, so I'm fine with taking that off.
Well, that's, that's fine, but I also, I also feel like that we're under a microscope for every charge, and everything we're charged to right now, so I wanted to make it aware, and this is the only place that I can inform everybody else on the board of this thing, because I can't call them each on the phone, that's against the law.
Well, that's fine, but where I'm upset is because Tiffany's already been reimbursed for her charges, but mine are still sitting out there, and we're going on, right now, it's two months that that's been sitting on my credit card, and now, if I'm not gonna be reimbursed until next month, when the checks are cut, that's three months, so I'm accruing interest charges.
Correct me if I'm wrong, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, but six people stayed, is that correct, six people stayed two nights?
Yes, and it was three rooms for two nights.
Three rooms for how much money?
Nine hundred and, nine hundred and some dollars. I always reserve rooms.
Nine oh five.
I always reserve rooms, usually like, within nine months of the conference, because when they come out, like, the Omni was the, you know, choice hotel, so when you called the Omni, I called the Omni, they didn't have any at that special rate, so I went and found another hotel, and I use a government, I find a government rate, because the government rates are always cheaper, and so that's what, what I did.
So, one, one room for two nights was nine hundred and forty-three dollars, and three rooms for two nights was nine hundred and five dollars, is that what I'm saying? Yeah, nine oh five seventy-four.
They stayed at the Marriott, and I stayed at the Omni. But like I said, I am never asked to be included whenever she reserves rooms, so I have to go on my own.
Well, I think we need a policy in place
That's what I think.
That any travel for town business, rooms have to be booked by the town administrator.
Okay, but whose card? Because that nine hundred went on my card, and so whose card is all these, because we don't have any credit cards.
I understand. I don't get that, because we're accused of having them on the time, but we don't.
Does anybody know how other towns do it?
They have credit cards.
We have like a P. Corlitts County.
Yeah.
Randy, are you questioning what we do with this particular claim for?
I think we should, I think, I mean, we don't have anything in place to say that we don't reimburse the claim, it's more of, we need to come up with a policy, like you said, to prevent this kind of situation going forward, because this isn't even something I had thought about till I received the question about it, and thought that it needed to be brought up, so.
Well, nothing's booked to go anywhere in the next two to three months, is there, as far as employee travel?
We have a, Alyssa and I go to the Governor's Water Conference in December, but I can, I'll just pay for that, that's no problem. We've already got
Well, I was thinking.
Government rate, it's like a hundred and nine dollars a night.
That you'll put on your personal card?
Yes.
Well, I think we need an agenda item for next month to create a policy about, about travel on town business, and to talk about payment, because I don't, I don't expect town employees to have to put a thousand dollars' worth of bills on their personal credit card, if we can get around that.
Yeah, prices are skyrocketing faster than you can
I agree.
Spit, so.
And then we, we solve this problem going forward.
Okay.
I recommend that we reimburse whoever needs to be reimbursed.
No, I agree.
As soon as possible, and get it behind us, and I agree with Bert that we need to talk policy, and maybe have even a written work instruction on how to take care of it in the future, next month.
I don't know, Tiffany, would that need to be in amendment to the employee handbook, or?
Um, it probably needs to be.
Jared's not with us tonight?
He's not, no, he has glaucoma, because we moved our meeting because of the holiday.
Oh, that's right, okay.
But I can talk to Jared and maybe call around to and get policies, and I, it, to me, I would think that it would need to be in the employee handbook.
Okay, well, I'll go ahead and make a motion to approve the reimbursement charges for the OML Conference.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes. Dave?
Discussion with possible action to enter an agreement with Kingfisher County and authorize the mayor to sign a quit claim deed to Kingfisher County of property located at southwest quarter of twenty-four, nineteen North, seven W I M T R. So, this is the property to the west of the county barn right now, that we've discussed. I believe this was the old landfill site, that, you know, it's mainly just a maintenance nightmare for us, so Mike and the county asked if they could use it for rock storage, and fence it in, and it takes something off of our plate to have to mow, so, we've been, we've been in the works with this for a little while now, so.
Yes, thank you.
I'll, I make a motion to enter an agreement with Kingfisher County and authorize the mayor to sign a quit claim deed for Kingfisher County property located at southwest quarter of twenty-five, nineteen North, seven W I M T R.
Okay.
Randy?
Yes.
Harold?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Six point four, discussion of possible action to retain Michael Booze to represent the Town of Hennessy regarding the Centennial Solids OCC application. Michael had something come up and was unable to be here tonight, so, we're gonna, we're gonna table this at the moment, but you guys would like to give an update on?
Sure, for lack of anybody else, I'll, I'll give a bit of an update. Since our, since the last meeting here, which, you know, opposed the, the application, there was a scheduled October twenty-first meeting for the, well, approval or disapproval of the Centennial Solids application. That was, of course, with our protest from both the citizens, a lot of them here, and from the town, that was delayed or, or put off for the next month into November. November date rolled around, and it was also deferred to a December date, just for, just for discussion, being on the docket, but, but no action. So, from the OCC side of things, nothing has happened, it's all on hold right now, the date, well, mixed up is a hearing, true hearing, the pros and cons, there, there's no date yet, firm date set for that. But I did want to give you also, besides the Centennial Solids LLC that's part of this, there's also a second entity, a Sooner Solids Solution, and I don't know if you were given, or if I got, I had copies of legal notices that were in the paper, if properly give you guys copies of them now. This is, this is what was published in the Kingfisher paper, I believe it was October first, rather than try to, I might have two more to jump. Instead of muddying up the waters last month when we met, I figured to just bring all of this to, to, to your attention now, and again, this, this is a second company, and they're running under, or they went to the DEQ for permits, or for the application. The reason being with the Centennial going with the OCC, it was due to the pits, the nature of the pits, and the nature of the materials that were going to be placed into those pits fell under the Oklahoma Corporation Commission jurisdiction. This part of it, these are, these are containments for dry matter, or fly ash is what's named in the, or what's listed in the official engineering report, fly ash to be stored, and then mixed with the materials that would be put into those pits, to dispose of the fly ash and to partially solidify the liquids in the pits, okay? Specifically, when you read the engineering report, it's not named in, in the article here, but if you read their engineering report or, or application, it is a caustic wash is, is what they call it, so it's caustic material that they will mix with the fly ash, then, then put into the pits for disposal. The, not that, not that all of that is new news, but there are two entities, so at some point in time, with the Sooner Solids application, there could be, there probably will be another opportunity, on our part, a necessity to protest that portion of it also to the DEQ, but before, they're not, DEQ's not even to the same point, those stage that the OCC is. If, if you read the articles, or as you read the article, at the, towards the end of it, the DEQ does offer the, a meeting to discuss with any interested people, their, their process, their approval process, and, and a protest process. We've made an official request to the DEQ for a meeting, that such meeting here in Hennessy, so that it would be an informational meeting, it's not time for a protest, it's not time to, you know, try to, try to convince them to do otherwise, they are just going to explain their process, and what, and the timing, and everything that goes on, so it will be, and we have no idea yet about the timing, but it will, it will just be a back and forth a little bit, and like I said, just informational type of a meeting. The, again, the, you know, the, the main difference is the type of, between the two companies, so that you don't, so that they both don't get lost in the shuffle, and that everyone understands that there are two, two entities that we're having to look at, having to watch right now. So, the Sooner Solids with the DEQ, that's for the solids part, the Centennial, Centennial company is with the pits and the, and the items, or the materials that's gonna be going into the pits. So, I just, just want to bring that up, get that out in the open for everyone, and we go from there. Other than that, you know, we're just trying to go through the, go through the point of, of finding out information, and so that we can share it with everyone that's concerned, share it with, there's a representative for Senator Paul right here, Grant, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, I'll point you out, sorry to put you on the spot. We've been, of course, a lot of us have been, been calling our local representatives, and even, you know, even higher up at the state, you know, some state officials contacted them, just to make them aware of what's going on, and see if we can make any headway on that side of things.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
Once they solidify that?
Yes.
Where does that go? I had a guy in my office the other day, and we were talking about that, he said, once they solidify that, then they will crush it and spread it on the roads, like rocks, try to spread it like rock, is that true?
No, I, I, I do not know for sure, I've been, I've heard that, I haven't seen that anywhere.
No, I haven't seen it. No, what happened?
That it would be crushed and used as a fill underneath, well, fly, and fly ash is used underneath like, blacktop or, or concrete, you know, roads to stabilize the earth there, I know that's, you, you know more about that.
Well, and they'd have to get an OCC permit, like, when we take tank bottoms Oh, right. And put them on the road.
Right, right.
We had to, the Corporation Commission, and they would too, and they'd have to be, you know, in agreement with the county, that's not gonna happen.
Right, right, but, but with this, mixing it up, yeah, when they crush that, the way, the way I read it, they were gonna mix it up, make it, you know, slip by the fly ash a little bit, fly ash is very fine particulate.
Right, yeah.
It's, I mean, it's ash, it's in the, right, but, you know, subject to the Oklahoma winds blowing everywhere, they're supposed to try to mix that together, but They're supposed to try to mix that together, but the way, what I've read it, it will be then disposed into these pits that Centennial Solids is building.
And just left there.
Then left there and covered up, eventually covered up. But, uh, that's, that's what I understand, yeah.
Would it be fair to get the engineers that David Dollar has for this idea to even come here and talk? I mean, I'd like to, just for whatever sake, I'd like to hear what they have to say and what their intentions are, what the hazards are, but I don't know if they'd be, I hate to say this, I don't know if they'd be truthful or not.
Their, um, how do I say this? Their, their engineering studies leave, to, to me, a lot of details out that, that are not explained. And, you know, that, I'm not, I'm trying to slam them, they, 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 they put out what they were paid for. Uh, so, uh, it, I think it'd probably be a fair question to ask of them, I would think. Whether in a setting like this or a public meeting, uh, such as what the D E Q has proposed, but that, that type, not with them, but that type of a meeting uh, could be, could be, I, I think so, uh, with that. But I've, I've not talked to them, that, that engineering company.
I talked to David Dollar actually tonight and he was, uh, you know, felt like he was getting a bad shake and I kinda disagreed with him. But, I mean, for fairness, maybe he can have his engineers come in here and, uh, you know, uh, they should give some kind of information out, I feel like.
Well, I, I give them no credence, just a personal basis. When they say they can dig a pit twenty-five feet deep and twenty-five feet of space in between the water level, uh, I know they're wrong because water level's from twenty to thirty feet. I have wells, Smonics have wells at that depth. There's no, they're, they're not giving any, any mind to the groundwater, the springs that are there at that twenty to thirty foot depth.
Those engineer reports online?
Yes, they are.
I was gonna say, you can go to that. I think the Corporation Commission's website.
Yes, yes.
And it's part of the application process because I was, for lack of a better word, snooping around on our website the other day.
If I could, yeah, if I could get an email from you, I could send you those links.
You bet, absolutely.
After meeting sometime, I, yep, yep, sure will. Anything else? Other than that, I, you know, can't tell you what Michael would say, but he did, he did, uh, send his regrets for not making it to the year.
Okay. Well, I appreciate the update. Commissioner Reilly. Okay. Uh, we're not gonna go into executive session, so we'll go down here to, uh, number ten, new business. Any matter not known or which could not be, which could not have been reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda in accordance with section three eleven dash nine, title twenty-five O S. Okay, councilperson's report. Harold?
I don't have nothing. Attorney's not here.
Okay. Bert?
I just wanna say kudos to our employees once again who have literally burned the midnight oil in water holes, uh, to get repairs made that we've, have been necessary recently. That's all I've got.
Okay. David?
Nothing.
Okay. I don't have anything. Number twelve, motion to adjourn.
I've got a quick question. I should have asked when you were talking about the water and stuff. I don't know if anybody else has noticed, but I, I've had three different lids on my water meter. You'll have one that fits, one that doesn't fit. Kids playing in the yard, playing catch, run across it, it dips up. Who's liable for a broken leg?
That's a question for our attorney, I think. I can't, I don't.
One is on there now and doesn't fit. I don't know if anybody else has this, but.
Can you call us tomorrow and give us your address?
Yeah, we can definitely check into that for sure.
I'll put in a work order right now.
Motion to adjourn.
Can I say something? Have you guys looked, reached out to other cities to see if you could use their sweepers? Rent their sweepers, whether your employees or rent, or pay for their employee to come down here? I work for a co-op and we do this all the time. Sorry, we reach out to other co-ops and they'll help us. We help them. You guys reach out to Ena, they have tons of street sweepers, really nice street sweepers. I didn't know if you guys reached out to them. Hey, can you, we, we pay your employee and rent your equipment? It's probably cheaper.
It's a thought.
That would be an Alyssa question because she's been working on that. So, but I will, we will, I will check with her to see if she's done that.
Sounds like a good idea.
Yeah.
Second.
Okay.
Randy?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
I was just gonna say like three houses down from me across the street, but close enough.
Well, I thought maybe if I put the name, you know.
All right. All right. Call to order of the Town of Hennessy, Hennessy Utility Authority Board of Trustees Regular Meeting, Thursday, November thirteenth, Council Room, six P M. Call to order and roll call, please.
Randy?
Here.
Bert?
Here.
Carol?
Here.
Dave?
Here.
Consider approval of consent agenda. Minutes of the previous month's meeting. Approval of claims as follows. Hennessy Utility Authority Fund, one hundred and thirty-eight thousand seventy-seven dollars and twenty-one cents. Previous month's Hennessy Utility Authority Fund, three hundred and twenty-one dollars and ninety-six cents. Approved payment to utility technology services for A M I base station as part of the brief grant K one two five, or is that K I? Maybe K I, two five dash one A M, A M I system completion. Approved resolution twenty twenty-five oh oh four for adopting new utility billing and collections policy and procedure. I make a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Second.
Randy?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Number three, citizens' comments. Or four, other scheduled business? Have anything? New business? Any matter not known or which could not have been re- reasoned, reasonably foreseen prior to the time of posting the agenda in accordance with section three eleven dash nine, title twenty-five O S. Councilperson's report. Harold? Bert?
No.
David?
Nothing.
Don't have anything. Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Randy?
Yes.
Dave?
Yes.
Bert?
Yes.
Carol?
Yes.